It's hanging in there so far to get some rain, so that's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
Hello, Les.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Les. I'm sorry I was a little late in the morning. I was trying to get my ear things to sync with my iPad and they won't do it. Sorry about that.
Okay, it is five P M. Okay, today is Monday, July the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. The time is now five P M. The go-to meeting of the City of Trinidad work session will now come to order. Today, we have a pretty extensive list of items that we are going for consideration. And we got broadband downtown Wi-Fi discussion, second quarter twenty-twenty marijuana sales tax, which includes capital projects, Space Create project, and Knows Art project. And item three, a twenty-twenty budget discussion, eight twenty-twenty one capital improvement projects. And priorities, and priorities are for, hopefully council has had some opportunity to maybe pick one or two items that they feel are priorities for the community that they would like to see move forward. Four is marijuana hospitality establishments, and just a discussion on that. And five, discussion of other agenda items if so, other than that have been brought forward already. So, starting with that, let's start with item one, which is broadband and downtown Wi-Fi discussion. We leave, we have Mr. James Worley. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct. James Worley, our I T director of dazzle this with broadband and downtown Wi-Fi stuff. Turn it over to James.
All right, all right, James, let's, let's, let's see your dazzle, James.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. First off, I'll apologize in advance for any tech terms you don't get, so if I do say something you don't understand, please let me know. In terms of broadband, the FCC defines broadband as high-speed internet with the minimum download speed of twenty-five megabits per second and minimum upload speed of three megabits per second. So, with that being said, there's currently three companies that are, well, four companies. You have Comcast, Internet, CCOM Internet, and CenturyLink DSL that are all operating high-speed internet. Now, based on FCC ruling, DSL kind of falls short at about the maximum of fourteen meg down and I think it's, I believe it's two meg up. Comcast, you can get quite a bit more, CCOM you get quite a bit more, and then we also have satellite internet available through HughesNet.
What about CenturyLink?
CenturyLink, it's high-speed internet. I think it's generally available throughout town. So, most of the residents, depending on your location, you can get either one of the three providers, CCOM, CenturyLink, or Comcast. If I know in certain areas like, excuse me, one second. In certain areas like behind the movie theater, access to DSL is probably impossible, so then you're limited to either CCOM or potentially Comcast. Generally, within the city limits, you're gonna have good access to all three services. When you get out on the fringes of the city, that changes a bit depending on your location. So, were there, were there any specific questions on the general term broadband, or?
Well, that's good. We'll turn it over to, you know, the council. Mr. Goodall, do you have any questions for James?
Not so much questions, but I know that we've been working on trying to light up the downtown area in certain areas, and I think it's becoming more vital with us heading into the amount of tourism, we're likely to see with the peak and everything come up, I think it's something we need to get wrapped up and available before next year's tourism season. I know that Comcast offers the very highest speeds available, is up to one gig now on, for the commercial side, because we, we use Comcast for our, to broadcast our Wi-Fi for our RV parks. And so, it's probably the fastest and would offer the best service. I don't know what the money would look like though, but it's time we get this wrapped up in something going here in town for our tourists when they come to town.
So, you're, you're talking about the Wi-Fi project?
Yes.
Okay, so, I spoke with a gentleman named Elijah at CCOM, and they said the, the holdup so far has been the recent turnover in the I T department with the city and that the project was kind of put on hold because they didn't have anybody to deal with. So, now that I've come on board, Elijah says their next step is to communicate with the business holders where CCOM already has fiber into certain buildings. And their, their idea is to put, is for CCOM to put their equipment on top of a building where they have existing fiber. So, they said using street poles or something probably wouldn't be ideal, just because of the location of, of existing fiber optic line. So, Elijah said that they'll start, they'll send somebody out to do another site survey, they'll start talking to the business owners, and we can get this project moving forward here pretty quick.
Yeah, and I just wanted to have a conversation with you. You had mentioned doing this through Comcast, but specifically, what allows us to offer this to the community is that we signed a contract with CCOM like a year or two ago that basically gave them permission to set up antennas or towers on top of Simpsons, Jurassic, and a few other high points around town. And this is what we're getting in exchange for that. So, that's why we wouldn't be doing it with Comcast. And also, I will say that I believe CCOM has the most reliable internet access in town that they don't fight based the disconnection problems that Comcast have often.
You know, reliability is kind of a hit or miss. Honestly, from my experience, CCOM's probably been the most reliable in terms of, in terms of business services. They don't offer the highest speed, and you're right, Comcast does have the highest speed available for this area right now. CCOM kind of depends on the weather, you know, like when you, we get a good lightning strike and anybody's equipment can be taken out or somebody with a backhoe north of Walsenburg or something. So, it's, and the nice thing there, the agreement with CCOM is since we're trading, CCOM's access to city property for their communications equipment, we get the Wi-Fi installed at no cost to the city.
Well, I was in no way trying to say we should go with one particular company. I was just pointing out the different ones available and what us, what we use in my business.
Right.
Firstly, but I know, I, I'm just excited that we may get this project finally going, and I haven't thought about the trade on the antennas and everything else, but I'm happy to see it going.
Well, and at home, I use Comcast, and I've used it for the past four, five years, and it's been a pretty reliable system. Here at the P D, we've got CCOM, at City Hall, we have CCOM and CenturyLink. And in general, it's, very as reliable as to be expected.
What do you mean by as expected?
Well, Mother Nature plays a huge part in that, so, and, and people play a huge part in that. Like I said, you get somebody, there was an incident a few, I'm, I'm gonna say a few years ago, it's been quite more than a few years, but somebody cut fiber north of Walsenburg, and it actually shut down from Walsenburg all the way down into Wagon Mount, New Mexico. And this entire section of the two states was completely without internet or cell phone service. So, you get somebody that makes a mistake somewhere, you can't compensate, just things you have to expect. So, there will be downtime. No service is a hundred percent reliable.
Ms. Ogletree?
Could you, Mr. Worley, could you please explain what issue we're talking about right now, because I'm, I feel like I'm a little bit behind. Are we talking about providing Wi-Fi to the City of Trinidad or to provide Wi-Fi in the downtown area? I'm not clear what we're, what we're looking at.
So, from the, yeah, from the agreement I saw, CCOM will be installing wireless access points along Main Street and Commercial and would be providing publicly accessible internet access to whoever wants to connect to that system.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I think, you know, you seem like you have a best handle on what everybody does, so I, I don't have any input into any of those providers. I, I just want to understand what you're talking about. Thanks.
Sure, sure. Ms. Grego?
Hold on, sorry. My, my trigger finger is really slow tonight. I, I under, I think that's a great idea to have Wi-Fi service downtown. Years ago, when I was on Tourism Board, what we wanted to do is put an electronic kiosk downtown where people could go to the kiosk and figure out, well, where's the restaurants, where's this, you know, where's the museums, where are the art galleries? And I think this is probably, I don't know if the Tourism Board's still on that idea, but I think that would be an ideal situation where we could do that. Or maybe even start doing an app, a City of Trinidad app. Times they are changing, I think you need to get on board.
Well, in terms of a kiosk, almost every, every child in the world has a smartphone. So, you know, generalized, very generalized, but so, with Google and iPhones and Android devices, the need for the kiosks has kind of gone away. It's kind of like, you remember internet cafes that were up and coming around the nineties? How many internet cafes do you see around these days? Right. Because you've got Welcome Center offers free Wi-Fi, McDonald's, almost all of your fast food places, all your coffee shops offer free Wi-Fi. So, as long as you have some kind of a smartphone or tablet or something, you can, you can gain access to those services.
Okay. Anything else, McGrady, Ms. Grego? Mr. DiBano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Rico. Just from my experience, just at the radio station, Comcast has fumbled the ball quite a bit in the last six months. I've waited for interviews and, and such till, you know, nine, ten o'clock at night for certain things. Mr. Worley, the internet speed doesn't have to be faster than a hun- a hundred megabytes per second, is it? We're not talking about ultra-fast or hyper-fast, up to three hundred megabytes per second, are we?
For public Wi-Fi?
Yes.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what CCOM's gonna be providing in terms of speeds. I'm, I'm the kind of guessing that it'd probably be around that twenty-five megabits per second mark, so.
Because that's considered, a hundred is considered pretty much fast internet with multiple users at, at one time, maybe without interruption of service.
I, I hate to use the word, but it depends on what politician you're talking to. There's.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot of debate on what's considered high-speed and what's considered usable. And so, based on the FCC regulations, it's twenty-five down and three up. Now, anybody with a family of four will know that a twenty-five meg connection is not enough. And honestly, with me and my wife and the, the child, we ended up upgrading to a two-fifty to get enough speed at our house.
That's almost, that's almost gigafast?
Yeah, and, you know, certain parts of the country, like Kansas City, Kansas, you can get gigabit to the residential. Most of the country, gigabit to the house is not that common.
Right.
So, we haven't really talked about what speeds they'll be offering. And I guess that's something we could cover with CCOM when we, when I meet with them and start doing another walkthrough.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Schuh, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's got a pretty good handle on the CCOM, so that's probably what we'd have to go with. I agree with that.
Mr. Williamson?
I don't, I don't think we need to spend any more time discussing any of the pros and cons or merits of any particular ISP. They're all subject to, you know, performing the best service they can. That being said, when this Wi-Fi is installed downtown, how, how does that function? Is there just gonna be a certain number of connections that are able to be made? What if those connections are occupied by people that are attempting to use this open network as their primary ISP? And then we have none available for people visiting? How does that take place?
That's a darn good question, and that's something that CCOM will have to handle. Because obviously, with a publicly accessible Wi-Fi, there's no way to prevent somebody from just tapping into it and using it for their everyday service. So, Space to Create is a prime example. If there's CCOM Wi-Fi publicly accessible in that area, all those apartments could use it and pay a, pay for service. So, in terms of capacity, it all depends on the type of hardware that CCOM installed, as to how many wireless simultaneous connections can take flight. And I don't know exactly what hardware they're planning on putting in, nor do I know what speeds they're gonna be offering.
Okay. I just, I think we need to pay special attention to that if, if at all possible, but I have a lot of faith that you'll, you'll churn on that.
Well, one concern of mine is somebody that, that gets on the public Wi-Fi and starts downloading movies from China.
Right.
You know, with the recording industry of America and the motion picture industry, if they file a complaint and CCOM has to shut down that Wi-Fi network for that reason, you know, that's, that's gonna be a concern also.
Yeah, and it, it obviously takes a lot of time to administer, you know, evaluate who's using what bandwidth. I, I don't know who would be responsible for that, so I think the other questions that you definitely need to run down.
Yeah, well, and if I, if it was me putting the system in, I would definitely have something in place to throttle people's bandwidth to potentially dissuade somebody from trying to download a large content.
Mr. Mayor, who, oh, sorry, Rusty, go ahead.
Well, I could probably shed a little light on that. We have a very simple software program here, because we broadcast to over roughly a hundred people. And what, we have a very simple program that's in there. If anyone goes to download the movies, get on gaming networks, the system locks them out automatically for thirty days. They can't even log back into the Wi-Fi, and people learned right away not to do that. And it's very simple software. Obviously, if I can run it, it's gotta be pretty simple stuff.
I was, I was actually gonna say that.
Honestly, I would expect CCOM to put something like that in place. Because there's, yeah, so.
Mr. Worley, this is Phil. Do you, you have any other questions, Mr. Williamson?
No, thank you.
Okay. My question is, it sounds like there may be some possibilities of maybe some issues. My recommendation to you, Mr. Worley, is to stay in contact with, with CCOM to see what kind of hardware, prior to them putting it in, to make sure that it is adequate. Because one thing that we don't want to do is have them install a run-of-the-mill, you know, product, and then we start falling short. And then they've got to come back in, and whether it's, there's gonna be an added cost to that or not, so it's better to approach that upfront than on the back end. Also, you know, that's something that, you know, having Wi-Fi throughout the entire city is pretty important if we are going to attract new businesses to the community. People want to be able to work from, you know, their homes, from their, like the Space Create project or wherever, to be able to access Wi-Fi. So, that's really important. I don't know if there is anything that the county is planning on doing in the near future. If we, being that we're on CCOM, do, they have to go with CCOM themselves if that's what they decide to do, or does it tie into any service that's available?
So, one little note to correct is this Wi-Fi project is pretty much just downtown Trinidad. So, there will be some lead over into like First Street and to the sides of, of Commercial, but it's not gonna be a citywide Wi-Fi project. It's just, just for a downtown area. And in terms of if the county wants to do something for public Wi-Fi, they, they could go with whatever providers, provider they'd like to. There, there's no tie-in or supremacy or anything that prevents that.
So, you said there, you know, you're, it's limited to the downtown area. I guess it would be nice to be able to see a map at some point of the coverage. I'm sure Commercial, Main Street.
I actually have a map. I'll dig it up and I'll, I'll email you a copy when I get into the office tomorrow.
Okay, that would be good to see. Yeah, that would be good to see what, you know, what coverage that will be available. And I think that it would be, when do you think this could possibly all happen, James?
That's a good question. There's obviously gonna be some time to get the equipment mounted. There has to be agreements in place with the business owners. So, there, there's potentially some stumbling blocks before we get this going. I'd like to see it happen by September, maybe, if we might get.
You know, if you could maybe contact CCOM and see if they have a target date, to see what their, if they do have a target date for it. That way, at least you'll know something, and Mike will know something as well.
Yeah, it's, I would expect to see somebody from CCOM down here probably this week to start doing another walkthrough. And once I talk to them, once they get their walkthroughs done, we should be able to have a better timeframe for you.
Okay. You know, of course, the, the big thing here is, once this all gets installed, I think it'd be a good idea to do maybe a little promotion, Mr. Valentine, that, I'm not sure, you know, just that Wi-Fi is available in this part of town so that when people come to Trinidad, they know that Wi-Fi is available for them. Because that's one of the big questions we've even had with some of the college students, wanting to have access to Wi-Fi in certain areas. I think they've had some difficulties from what I understand. So, I, I, I think we're on a path yet. I just wanted to get a clear understanding of, you know, where we are today and where we're going. And I, I think you've answered our questions, Mr. Worley.
Councilwoman Ogletree has a question.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree, go ahead.
For Mr. Worley, is it planned that the landing page would be a City of Trinidad landing page to promote Trinidad? And I think that would be a missed stop or denied.
That's a very good question. That type of, that initial page is what's called a captive portal. And typically, it's, it's a legal document, well, no, let me rephrase that. It's not legal document. It's a best practice and the one is permitted on that network. I'm sure it could be set up like something at a hotel where it's a captive portal with something leading to either Trinidad, City of Trinidad's website or some other type of page. So, that's something we'll have to discuss with CCOM.
Is there anything that will have to come in front of council for approval in the near future? I know we've given some approval already. Do you, and Mike, do you anticipate anything else that would have to come in council for consideration on this?
I, I don't believe so, Mayor. The agreement is in place. We've, it's a signed agreement allowing CCOM to use some of our water tank sites, Simpsons, Jurassic, in exchange for this. I believe that came before council, like James, James said, a couple I T people ago. James is here to stay, so we're gonna get this done. And we're going to definitely have promotion. The idea was more of a, a kind of a walkabout downtown service, and there was talk of a possible app, I Two Tourism and such, so that you could take a walking tour, you could scan the, the U R codes or whatever they're called in certain places and get stories. That was the idea way back. We'll, we'll continue to pursue that and definitely, as we market Wally, we'll add something the likes of free downtown Wi-Fi offered or something. It all ties together.
The last question I have, of course, is, you know, we, Fisher Speaker's coming online probably early in the year and just want to be able to have access to Wi-Fi or whatever for these people that want to come to Trinidad. They're coming out of Denver, so they could have a good Wi-Fi connection to see what we offer, what this offers, what they can do on the peak once this is all said and done. So, I, I, this goes back to what I've been saying for the last couple of months is community preparedness for what is coming. Hopefully, this COVID will be able to, you know, calm down over the next several, maybe six to eight months and get prepared for the spring, and hopefully by then, we'll be online to be able to move forward with, you know, our recreational activities. So, that's what I, I, just our community readiness is something that I'm very, very concerned about and interested in making sure we move forward with it. Any other questions from council for Mr. Worley? Thank you, Mr. Worley.
No, thank you all.
Okay, on to item two, second quarter twenty-twenty marijuana sales tax projects. It looks like is, Cheryl, are you on?
Cheryl is on there, but if I may, she, she may share her screen and be able to see the spreadsheet. We have a, a number of wish lists, but what I'd like to do is have Wally speak to the Space to Create project and Tom Beach to speak to the Knows Art project to get you an update of where we are funding-wise and then, and then talk about all the requests that are out there and get a fill from council on priorities. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Wally just give an update on Space Create.
Okay, Wally, go ahead and give us your information.
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, just fifteen minutes before this meeting started, I emailed all of you a current sources of funding and expenses, as well as a breakout of the three phases of this project. As we've talked about before, and we still have a ways to go to finish this entire project, the current bid, and though I will note that we don't actually think that it is gonna cost this much, because this is a bid given to us by Gibbs, who is bringing all of their workers into New Orleans, and so we think we can get it done to less with local contractors. But that bid that they gave us was close to one point eight billion dollars. That's broken into three phases, with the first phase basically being the, the, the area that will be managed by the Creative District. So, the Creative District Office, the Tentative Office of Economic Development, the Co-Working Space, the Maker Rooms, the Board Room, and the Community Gathering Space. the maker rooms, the boardroom, and the community gathering space. Um, and to do the build outs for that whole section will be roughly a million dollars. Um, what we have right now cash in hand at the city is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand that is dedicated to this project and can be used on any of the construction elements. And then we also have an additional fifty thousand that is allocated specifically to Wi-Fi and broadband infrastructure. Um, I'm already working with James to, uh, put in that Wi-Fi and broadband. Um, and so far it's looking like that is only gonna cost about thirty-five thousand or so. Um, and through this grant, we are allowed to reallocate the remainder of those funds to other portions of the project as soon as we provide proof that we are getting high-quality Wi-Fi infrastructure within the building.
Actually, W- Wally, I'm sorry. Um, so I was going through the quote again the other day and actually missed including the quote for the hardware when I told you thirty-five. So it's gonna be closer to forty-two or so?
Okay, yeah, I, that's too bad, but either way we'll still have a little bit more to put into that fund.
Right.
Um, additionally, we have also these two grants that we have been working with Oedit on, um, the coworking match, which is thirty thousand dollars, and the Oedit Last-In match. Um, the thing about the Last-In matches, yeah, and they've already been approved, but the way that they're designed is that we have to build everything up until the last. We've been working with Oedit to make it so that this Phase One can count as, uh, the project that is at, at hand that we have to finish. Um, but in order to get that, basically we have to get our funds up to seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, so basically we're still looking for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to finish Phase One. Um, we do have two grants that we've already applied for that we are, um, waiting to hear back on and seeing if we're awarded funds, uh, which one of them is an E D A grant that we've been working on with, uh, Trent and Gillian, or, yeah, Trent from E D A and Gillian from Community Builders, a nonprofit. Um, and that grant, I mean, I put zero to a million, but the truth is it's not even a million cap. I'm just thinking that is reasonably what we might be able to get from them. Um, but that, that grant actually has no cap. Um, it is a twenty percent match, so we would have to match twenty percent, they would match eighty percent. But that would obviously already be accounted for in the money that we've already put into this project. Um, the other one is the state historic tax credit. That one has already been submitted. Um, that one is up to six hundred thousand dollars and, um, we are just waiting to hear back that one. We will not be rewarded that money or awarded that money until the beginning of next year. Um, so though I, I do hope that we can depend on that money for Phase Two and Phase Three, um, that's not gonna fill our void that we have currently right now for this phase one part of the project. And I would imagine that would also be the same with the CARES Act E D A grant. Um, that might come this year, but I don't wanna be left in a position where we're relying on that to finish the Phase One. Um, so that's basically where we're at. We have the construction documents. We, um, are preparing to put this out to bid in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I already do know that we have at least three contractors that are planning on bidding it that are regional, if not local. Um, and yeah, we're really hoping that when we get those bids in, it will be substantially lower than one point eight million and make it easier for us to give this, uh, project. So I think that is basically where we're at, and I'm happy to answer the questions.
Mr. Goodall?
Can you?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, can you just give a, a brief, uh, description of Phase One?
Phase One would be, well, and actually in the email I sent you, um, Phase One would be, like I said, it would be the coworking space, the main entry place. So as you walk into that building, that main garage, all of that would be completed, um, the creative district office, the boardroom, the maker spaces, and then actually I'm, I think this is what Mike's hinting at, the roof over the garage. Uh, that is included in Phase One. Even though that, the rest of the garage is allocated to Phase Three, um, we did tell them that we thought that the garage was top priority, that we needed to get that taken care of and get this entire building certified as like an occupiable space. Um, and so that is included in Phase One.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodall?
You betcha. So, I'm guessing that we lost, uh, all arguments on the roof included in the original bid. Is that what I'm just understanding right now?
Basically where we met was that we couldn't determine the whether it was a city problem or an art space problem because of the turnover of the city. And so what they have done is that they are helping us apply for this historic tax credit grant. And if we do get that historic tax credit grant, they are gonna be the ones that turn those tax credits into actual dollars for us to use for this project. Um, and so that is, so Art Space is still working with us to get that money, but they are not pulling it out of their own pockets by any means.
So, Mr. Downs, is that how I'm gonna understand that contracts work? With a contract that that was supposed to be in, that, and we just negotiated where, well, you know, what, the rights are...
No, sir. That's not how contracts are supposed to go. And I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but, I mean, you're, that is not how contracts work. That's correct.
Well, I don't like the numbers, one point eight. I sure hope they come in much less than that. And I sure don't like being caught with the extra hundred thousand dollars that was supposed to be in the original contract. At best, that's all I have to say right now.
Ms. Ogletree?
Um, Wally, do you have any other ideas of where we're gonna come up with the two hundred and fifty thousand that we need besides the grants that you discussed?
There are two other grants that we're applying for, but neither of them would equal two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're, they both max out at about fifty thousand dollars each.
So are you thinking that marijuana money is how we're gonna make that up? Is that kind of the idea?
And that is what we're asking about today. I did just become aware today that that is not how much we have in our marijuana budget at the moment. Um, so, yeah, so that is something that we have to address. Um, at this point, obviously we're gonna continue applying for money as we can. And the C D A grant is a very new thing that we just started the process of within the past two weeks. Um, but, uh, but yeah, we are gonna be applying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere in order to do the Phase One if we get this three hundred thousand dollars from Oedit.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Ms. Gregor?
Wally, when you talk about the CARES Act grant, have you started the process for that yet?
Yes, we have. Like I said, uh, we sent the initial proposal, uh, to Trent and the E D A. And I have a follow-up meeting with him. He cannot meet with me until August twelfth for us to finish that grant process and get it submitted.
Okay, all right. So the state historic tax credit, you said that's gonna start probably in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, they have already allocated all the funds for twenty twenty, um, and we are submitting now to put ourselves in the line for twenty twenty-one. Um, I don't wanna speak to us getting it for sure, cause we may not, but I do know the people that wanna see this project happen are very involved with selecting who gets those grant funds. Um, so there's a very good chance that we will be allocated funds, but I don't wanna promise that by any means.
Were you considering the roof replacement in Phase One? Is that a portion of Phase One?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any way you'll be to... Because then we'd only be fifty thousand out. We're estimating that roof to be, I guess, a thousand dollars? Is there any way we could juggle around the construction phases so we could wait until we did that many from the historic tax credit?
I, mm, I don't think so, to be honest. Um, I think that if we were to do that, we'd have to put this whole project on pause. And I also, um, I think that Oedit is a little frustrated with us that we don't have everything else for this together yet. And I, I don't wanna say that they'll pull that three hundred thousand from us, but it hasn't been officially secured. And a part of this whole Last-In aspect of that was for them to motivate us to come up with this money for the city, to either find it or to put up that money, um, to match this. I will say at the time, we were being told that the, the budget for this phase would be eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Though the fact that it's nearly a million, million more, um, than that original, um, price that was given to us when they told us they would give us three hundred thousand dollars is what makes this really difficult and also why we have been working with them to do the Phase One as the Last-In matching graders of the entire one point eight million dollar project.
So they don't give us any consideration that we're going through a global pandemic? I mean, that doesn't sway their impatience with us?
I have not asked them that, but I would not, uh... I would say that they really want us to spend this money as soon as possible. Um, because like with the city budget, we budget things in one year. We try and spend it in that year.
Uh-huh.
That's how they try and do it too, and we are, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DeBono? Mr. DeBono?
Um, you're muted.
You need to unmute.
Uh, you clicked it once, but then you clicked it again. There we go.
Uh, no questions, uh, Wally. Uh, I was gonna ask you, does that have to be paid back? It doesn't have to be back to CARES Act, right, the, uh, grant?
That would be a grant, so no. Uh, and that's the other thing is there, there are opportunities for loans out there where we can get some lo- low-interest loans to complete this project. Um, but I don't think we wanna do that. I think it's in our best interest to keep working to try and find this money where we can.
And, and it's not taxable income, correct?
Correct. Uh, because we are a city, so...
Right.
Yeah, government is.
Okay.
Mr. Chu?
Uh, I'm kinda agree with Rusty. I'm not real happy with the price of that. I kinda think we got a little messed up on the roof part and, uh, I, I think we need to work on doing something to get that corrected. Uh, I, I don't know. It just seems like it's kind of a mess here and I don't know where we're gonna dig up that kinda money. That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I'm, I'm sorry. I was, uh, looking through the document, uh, you sent and then listening to the discussion. Um, I thought I heard two, two different numbers. What is the total all-in cost for the roof?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so two hundred and we're, um, we're pretty certain that is, uh, that's a rock solid number, I mean, as, as close as it can be?
I, I believe so. Um, that was done by Art Space, not by us specifically. Um, but yeah, so we do think that is a pretty close guess to what that would cost.
Okay. Um, that being said, just as a, as a side point, I mean, it's a dream, I think. Wha- what type of roof is that?
Uh, what we need to put on there is a PVC roof.
Okay. Um... Just, uh, how, in, in, uh, the line of projects, how far out there is, is the roof, um, at this point?
Honestly, I think the roof would be our first priority if we, um, can obtain all of the money for Phase One. Uh, just because we don't wanna spend the money on the roof before we're ready to move forward, because then we won't be able to, I, it just, we're dealing with this three hundred thousand dollar matching grant for it, which is what makes it kinda complicated. But also, we wanna make sure that we get that three hundred thousand dollars.
And that, that is probably what needs to occur next is the roof.
I, that's what I would say. Um, just be, I, we don't want that building being, we don't want any...
Right. We need to drive in the roof, or...
Yeah, exactly.
I have a...
All right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but it just came to me when you were thinking. Did, does the City of Trinidad own that building in two thousand sixteen? Who owned the building in two thousand sixteen?
I do not know that.
Okay, this is what I'm getting at. If the city have pictures of that property, I'm talking not only the garage roof, but the total, really, car is starting yet, the, uh, restored. There was a catastrophic hailstorm June thirteenth of two thousand sixteen here in Trinidad. If we, if the city owned that building at that time, did anybody think to apply for, you know, damage on that roof?
That was before my time and I, I am...
I would say, uh, I don't believe we owned it at, at that time. Um, but we would have definitely, uh, had our adjuster take a look at that, so, um, I, I will look into that for sure.
What's the statute of law with each of them?
Well, it, it all depends on what insurance company you're dealing with, but there's really no, they say a hundred and twenty days, but when you have a storm of that magnitude and that destructive storm like that, any insurance company will give you a little leeway. Another thing to approach it, is that proportion that, Trin, uh, In- Inbank didn't donate that part. We bought that part, correct?
I believe so, cause I believe that, uh, I, I made it was Gorditas.
Right, right. So in the transaction, when we bought that property, was it disclosed to us at that time that there was damage to that roof? Or did anybody think of asking that question?
I am not sure. I do know that it's been known for a long time that that roof will need to be replaced. And kind of that is where the point of contention in this conversation is with Art Space, is that, um, we said we needed a new roof, but they needed to find a way to cut this budget. So they basically agreed that instead of doing an entire new roof, they would patch the roof. They did spend, I believe, thirty thousand dollars patching the roof, but there still are minor leaks. So that wasn't a solution. That was a way to make the project go through. And it's, yeah, now it's just difficult to decide who's at fault or to determine who's at fault, because according to them, by patching the roof, they met their demands of the envelope repairs that was agreed to. Um, but at the same time, it's, it hasn't solved the entire problem, so...
No, I understand, but I, I think in, it's an avenue that we haven't pursued.
Yeah, still...
I'm still working claims from that two thousand sixteen else one. People that didn't realize them are people that, the same situation. We bought the property. We didn't know it was damaged the time we bought it. Do we, you know, I'm just trying to think out of the box here, seeing where we can come up with some money.
Yeah, no, I love the creative thinking, sure.
And Mayor, if I could please...
Yes.
...just real briefly, we could even have an executive session of this, cause there, I, and I'm not sure that's necessary. I, you know, I don't wanna, um, but, but there are things that, uh, we could talk about. But I, I hope you guys understand, I mean, there were a lot of things to be covered in the, uh, the series of agreements that involved this whole, this whole project. But I, I do wanna say, cause everybody's gonna look at me like, hey, how'd you let that get bought down? I ju- I mean, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to be very serious, but these are contracts and agreements that I never reviewed. I had nothing to do with the review of these contracts. So this isn't all about, uh, acquitting myself. I just, for the new council members and people out there who are thinking that I, I had nothing to do with the contract review and I just wanna say that. And, and especially you, Councilman Goodall, in response to your question, should've said that.
And I think that's a big part of what makes us all really different, people, is the people that were all involved in this are no longer with us. And so it's those of us that weren't involved trying to figure out how to get it all through.
They're pulling forward.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, I, I think where we go with this now, it looks like, is that check into it to see when, uh, we took owners... uh, we took ownership of the building to see um when this occurred and if possibly was it covered by the insurance, I, we don't know. So let's check into that, I think that's an important thing to try to remember. The other thing, Wally, I don't know if you have been working with uh you know, the people that are doing, I'm not sure if Gibbs Construction, through their per forma, there was a lot of contingency in there. And have you, have they given you a line item list of expenditures that you've been able to look at to see if there's any of that contingency left that they could roll over? I think that would be something, 'cause they stuck quite a contingency in there. I thought it was around eight hundred, I'm thinking it was around eight hundred thousand dollars if I remember right. So I don't know if they utilized that eight hundred thousand contingency in the existing structure of Allen Street and the, the building uh on Main Street of what they've done. So I think that would be an interesting thing to try to look into. Um, it would be interesting to see, I think you mentioned that you were going out for some bids. Was that just on phase one, or are you going to look at uh a bid and maybe a on the other two bid, on the other two phases as well? Winner, it, it would be nice to know what goes, what the total cost would be if local contractors would be, would get involved.
I believe, and we were planning on putting the entire project out for bid.
Okay.
Uh, that one could hopefully get an updated cost estimate. And, and the biggest reason why we think this cost estimate is incorrect is because we looked at the per square footage cost of this compared to the per square footage cost of the rest of the project, and it was significantly higher. Um, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I wanna say fairly close to twice as expensive per square foot. And uh, just we kind of were under the impression that they really want to do it, that they were ready to go back to New Orleans, they gave us a higher than what they would normally give estimate in the hopes that we would put it out to bid and find someone else to do it.
You know, one thing to remember, and I'm looking back at the uh, the other projects and uh, the per diem that they had stuck into the the other projects that they're finishing up on now was pretty high. And that was close to, if I remember right, close to a million dollars. So if we have local contractors to do that, uh, you know, there, hopefully we can get somebody from Trinidad to do some of that work. That per diem wouldn't be there, so if we'd save, you know, I would say at least four hundred thousand dollars per diem for that one building. Uh, so that, that would be interesting to see. Uh, also, um, I had talked to Caroline, I forget her last name, is now, uh, from Chaffa. And uh, she talked that maybe there might be some money available through Chaffa tax credits. However, with that, um, they would have to see some completed projects, which is what we are doing right now with uh the two other structures that are finishing up now. So that might be a possibility. I don't know if you've had time to, to look into that as well. Uh, so looking at this, uh, you know, it looks like we have four hundred and fifty thousand in hand right now. Uh, there, there was a, there was fifty and thirty. There's a three hundred thousand dollar Oedit, uh, that's the, the back end. Of course, then you have the state of historical tax credits. Uh, so between those, that's a little over a million dollars. Uh, actually about one point three is what it looks like. So uh, I don't think we're really that far off to pull this off with uh one point three, one point four. If that's, hopefully that's where it'll come in at, but that's just uh from what I'm seeing. Uh, but I guess the big thing is get those bids from local contractors to see what, what they have. Uh, I think in all actuality, uh, you know, we look, and of course Cheryl's gonna fill us in after a bit about the marijuana money that we have now. One thing that we're gonna have to, next item is gonna, we're gonna be talking about is the Noah's Ark project. We need to decide which, which project, I think one councilman had mentioned, say, let's pick one, get it done, and move on to the next one. So my thinking is, is that uh, you know, we do have a pretty substantial amount of money that is in our rainy day fund right now. Uh, council can give consideration to taking some of the money uh from the amount that's actually that we have received on this second quarter, which is one point one million. And uh, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars could come out of there if we needed to finish that roof and get it done with. Uh, so I, I, I think we have some ability to get this project done if this is our priority. So keep that in the back of your mind. I'd like council to consider that or keep that in the back of their mind, like I said, as, as we move forward. Uh, I'm not sure if uh council has any uh thoughts on that at this point in time, or you just wanna let it be or just think on it?
I definitely would like to hear, hear about what's going on with Noah's Ark.
Sure.
And then talk to Cheryl, see how much money is available, and then see what our shortfall is, where we need to make up what.
Got, gotcha. Miss Ogletree, you. Well, already, any thoughts, Miss Ogletree?
I'm good with um.
Okay, Miss Gregor?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, I just.
Miss Gregor?
I'm having, I'm sorry, I keep people wrong, but so if I'm looking at the second quarter marijuana request, then it shows on here, and Cheryl correcting if I'm wrong, that we're showing the rainy day fund is gonna give thirty percent of that money from the second quarter of, of marijuana taxes, which is three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. If we could take two fifty out of, instead of putting it in the rainy day fund, 'cause I remember our city manager mentioning that that fund is getting pretty substantial. Instead of putting that thirty percent in the rainy day fund, if we could put whatever we need for space to create and the balance into the Noah's Ark uh account, plus what the Noah's Ark uh board is willing to include and what we've already allocated for that project. You might be, I don't know, but either that or divide that rainy day fund by half and then do what, like we did the last time, give half to Noah's Ark and half to uh Space Create.
Mister DeBono?
I just wanna know how much uh money Noah's Ark needs for com- for completion.
Sure. And we'll get that, uh, when that, that's the next line up, and then come up, we'll give us a little more detail on that. Uh, Mister Shu?
Uh, I, I kinda like to see us finish one of the projects, and that, and that, that's one of the deals, I think Noah's Ark. Uh, we keep splitting up money and we don't finish one project, it just keeps adding to the project. We need to just find our priorities, and uh, either finish Noah's Ark or the, uh, the big creative arts. Uh, I'll go for finishes Noah's Ark and then work on the, the other part of the uh Arts Building. Uh, I just think it's more important that we get one of these projects finished right away.
Mister Williamson?
Um, I'm sorry, I uh got disconnected, it took a minute to get back on, I had um internet issues. Uh, I uh, I'll be just, what are you asking for specifically you put on? I might have the information.
Well, what we're looking at is maybe taking uh some of the, 'cause the amount of money that we received from the marijuana revenue uh is, was one point one million uh for the second quarter. So, you know, they ask for uh, is quite a bit less than that. So we're thinking about uh taking uh the money, the difference possibly, and putting it into like that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not putting it into our rainy day fund, 'cause we got already three point six million or something like that in our rainy day fund. And being able to allocate that money either into the Space Create project or the Noah's Ark, which we'll be talking about here shortly.
Okay. Um, if, if it's alright with you, Mister Mayor, I'd like to hold off a comment until I have a little bit more of a discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, we're falling out there.
That's okay.
Can I just say one more comment before we move on to Noah's Ark?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you all for some of the great thoughts you have. I, I will definitely look into when we got the building, see if there's anything we can do with that insurance claim. Um, I will also uh talk to Gibbs and HHL and ArtSpace about that contingency fund, um, and see if there's anything remaining in that. Um, and I hope that some of these can help fill that gap. I do agree that it would be awesome to just see one of these projects completed, um, even if it is uh Noah's Ark and not the Space Create. Um, I would say, however, that just anything we can do to try and meet the gap to get this phase one completed um ASAP, I think would be very important, just to make sure that we um continue to have a good positive relationship with Oedit, um, get the money that they have offered us for this project, and um I hate to tap into the rainy day fund, but if that is what we have to do, I appreciate you all even just considering us moving forward, making this project uh complete.
The uh, the, the final comment on this, uh, that my one concern that I have, and I think, Wally, you have touched on this, uh, is the three hundred thousand dollars from Oedit that we have hanging out there for, you know, the back end. Uh, I don't want to do anything that would endanger us losing that, 'cause then we're really behind the eight ball. So I think that we need to uh keep that in the back of our mind as we uh decide uh which direction we go. So uh, with that being said, let's go on to item C, which is the Noah's Ark project. And I think uh Mister Beech, uh, I think you're going to uh give us informer, or inform us on that project, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, members of council, good evening. Um, I am somewhat uh happy to say that the Noah's Ark project will be out to bid tomorrow. It'll be advertised in papers, which is uh on websites, in plan rooms. We're going for roof construction. Um, after a conversation with Mister Johnny Anderson from the board on Friday, the latest figures that I have is that Noah's Ark themselves have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars uh available for completion. We have set aside units set aside, excuse me, uh, I'm old, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Then it comes to about six hundred and fifty-two thousand we have available at this point. A preliminary budget back in February was listing the probable cause at seven forty-eight. So we're about a hundred thousand short of that number. I don't particularly agree with that number, I think that number is low, quite honestly. Uh, I'm thinking between eight hundred and eight fifty to finish the building, so we're looking at probably two hundred thousand to be, after all the numbers purged with Space Create, and I hate to bring up a two hundred thousand dollar figure, but that's, that's what I'm thinking we're gonna be short. Um, we have, it's taken us a while to get these plans approved and to get everything finalized. We were trying to be, I would say, frugal, with Noah's Ark money and marijuana money the city had, make sure we get a building that we, to be proud of, and yet would still be uh functional and kind of state-of-the-art building. To that end, we have pulled back on some fire protection corridors we had, and we've decided to sprinkle the building. It's just easier, it's quicker, it's more reassuring at three o'clock in the morning that the building is sprinkled. Uh, and it will actually probably save us the money overall. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can. Uh, just for your information, if it goes to bid, or excuse me, if the bid goes out tomorrow, the bid opening is August twenty-fifth. And you will have, I hope to bring something forward to you on September first as far as a comment.
Okay. Mister Goodall, do you have any questions?
Well, I do think those numbers are encouraging when we look at, well, we could be short here and short there. It gives hope that we can possibly, I think, get this, get both projects wrapped up.
I agree on. I agree. Miss Ogletree?
Uh, Mister Beech, just the, the budget that you're talking about, what does it do for the parking lot? What kind of parking lot treatment will that?
The current numbers, the numbers that are included here, excuse me, the eight hundred and eight fifty will only put the eighty-eight parking spaces across the front, it will not resurface the entire uh area. That's something we have to tell them later.
Okay, is that something that's necessary to do, or can we get away with not having that done for a while?
I would say the latter. I'd say we could not get away with not having that for a while, as long as we have our eighty-eight good par- parking spaces in the front. Uh, we have an eighty-eight sidewalk around at the back, which was recently added uh for egress. I think it would be in good shape myself.
Alright.
Miss Gregor?
Uh, you know, pardon the pun, this, this has been my pet project. You have to understand that Noah's Ark has been operating. Half of their operation is in like a seventies mobile, that has no running water in it. So, I think the least of their problems is uh a few potholes in the, in the lot. But um, I wanted to ask Tom a question and I have an observation. But um, are you, are any of those contractors, 'cause I started working with this and talking to um, the president of the board about getting volunteers here as, as far as Noah's Ark people doing some of this, is the city gonna allow that? 'Cause we can cut, we can cut a lot of expenses off these bids, or is that not allowable because it's a municipal building?
Yes.
Yes, why?
Well, it just, yes, and that's, that's all thing. Uh, we, we need to, we would need to talk to the winning bidder and try to negotiate with him. There are a few things, there are a few things that um volunteers could do. Uh, there's not a whole lot, because it is a commercial building, it is a, um, we don't wanna interfere with contractors basically, their, their contract or with their, their line of work. But I think we could um discuss with them, negotiate with them perhaps, see if we can get some volunteer work done, maybe for example.
Well, I already got a commitment from an ACAP man, 'cause he would, he would give us the, he would give us the uh, his services at cost, and I don't know if that, that offer still. But with, I'm sorry.
I don't know if that would be doable, especially with the, the winning general contractor.
Okay, I, I gotcha. So, just an observation, our rainy day fund is three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. So, we're about fifty-five thousand dollars wide on covering the two hundred thousand dollar deficit on both of these projects. Maybe council would like to consider taking the three forty-five, eight forty, add fifty-five from the emergency fund, which is really not that much.
Right.
And, and start these proj- complete one, complete, completely, and start our obligation on the space to create building.
Mister DeBono?
No, I know, Mister Mayor, one of my questions was already answered.
Okay. Mister Shu?
No, I, 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 I agree, I'm gonna sprinkle, I think we should be able to do both projects, it shouldn't be that bad. And it'd be important to get it done. Um, we've been just kinda slacking off a little bit on the, on Noah's Ark. And I think it's important to get it finished, and the Space uh, Decree would be nice to get done too, at least phase one.
Okay. Mister Williamson? Mister Williamson? Okay, he shows that he's on, but he's, he's, maybe he's, hmm, he might not be mic'd in, okay. Uh, Cheryl, why don't you go ahead and give us a rundown?
Audrey, would you allow me to share my screen? Okay, can y'all see the screen?
Yes.
So I plugged in the two figures that were discussed for Noah's Ark and space decree. And that brings us to a deficit of three hundred and ninety-three thousand. As Councilwoman Grego stated, there is three hundred and forty-five thousand scheduled to go into uh the rainy day fund. Currently, the rainy day fund holds two point five million dollars. Um, on the spreadsheet that you had in your drive, it lists all of the requests that have come forward. Um, the hundred and forty-one thousand are pretty much absolute costs. They should have been approved the first quarter, but then um council approved all of the funding for COVID. And, and then these are just requested city projects listed um from department heads. I'm trying to evaluate if there are restful employees, however, completion, they can be allocated costly in the third quarter. Can you still hear me?
Yes, which projects are you talking about for the third quarter?
Any, any or all, I mean, uh, I, I think that the city hall access control system and the IP cameras are critical, most importantly, for the community, community center, cause they have um plenty of stuff up there almost on a monthly basis. But other than that, you know, it's, it's pick and choose, and it's a wish list for the city department heads. I don't know how urgent any single one of them are. But, but that's just my suggestion, and Mike, if you'd like to chime in.
Sure, sure, Mayor and Council, I appreciate that, Cheryl. Um, as Cheryl said, we, we gathered requests internally from, from staff. Um, after the discussion of uh art space and Noah's Ark, um, if council is amenable to utilizing rainy day funds, I think uh for this quarter, rather than putting them in the rainy day account, using them for the projects, I think we can uh take a look at all of these requests, prioritize, and uh we'll be able to move to third or fourth quarter. Um, I think some of the security things that we've been lacking for years now at uh, you know, city hall, community center, we've had break-ins. I think a couple, just within the last couple of months at the community center, uh, those cameras would go a long way. Um, and uh, the library cameras have been on there, uh, on the radar for two, two years, it's not longer, um, we have the opportunity, but um, uh, I think uh three forty-five from rainy day would go a long ways to, to making this uh, this whole um, and we could juggle some of these things out to the next quarter. Ask a question here quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, what about the, the general grant fund, a hundred thousand dollars, can we put that on the third, is that necessarily for this quarter?
Uh, not maybe, no, right, um, that, that's a possibility, that we could uh take that down a little bit, um. That is for, I know it says the Fox Theater, but it also says et cetera. Um, it's the mayor's idea, and I think it's a good one to have. You know, these grants come around and they need matching, they're always, you know, due in a month. And uh, to have that fund um available would be good, but that's definitely a possibility to reduce that.
Yeah, I just think that maybe if we could cut that in half, that would make a big difference, and then uh next quarter, just build it back up. I agree that it's a good idea to have the grant funds. I just thought maybe at this particular time, this would be a good time to cut back and at least get some of these other projects finished. Sure.
Uh, something else, something that I-
But may, but, but may, when we go out for grants, typically, the grant match does come from the capital improvements project fund, which is flush with fun- with money, it hasn't been over expended. And then with the continuation of increased sales tax collection, we're not really in any concern that that fund's been depleted. So typically, our grant match always comes from capital improvements part, or the capital improvements fund.
Okay, Cheryl, uh, one quick question, how are we on track with revenue uh at the end of uh the second quarter versus last year's second quarter overall uh revenue from the, for the general fund? Are we putting-
General fund sales tax was collected at approximately twenty-eight percent more than last year at this time.
Okay.
Um, we do, we have not collected, or we've had some shortages in a particular, a few areas, such as motor vehicle sales tax and um highway users tax. They're starting to come online now, um, but we, that's where we did see the decreases. However, overall, those amounts compared to the entire budget probably make up ten to twenty percent of loss.
Okay.
It's not very significant. However, once um the unemp- the unemployment tax rate is um uh shut down at the end of July, we may see a difference in the jungle sales tax, I don't know.
Okay.
We still don't know how we're gonna fare through the rest of these quarters.
That's true. That's true. Okay, uh, something I wanted to, to uh, to mention.
I had a, I had a quick question, I just had a name here.
Go ahead.
I called in, I called in on the phone. Are you getting any echo?
You're getting quite an echo.
I'm gonna, one more thing. So, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I am not sure what's going on at my go-to meeting, I've uh logged in and relogged in a couple of times, but uh, it's not letting me unmute through there, so I've just called in on the phone. I have a question for Mr. Beach. Mr. Beach, you said that the um project for Noah's Ark is looking to be two hundred K uh shortfall, correct?
That's my prediction, yeah, I, I wanna make sure we have enough to cover it, and I believe two hundred thousand.
Okay. But I mean, that is the prediction, cause it's only going, it's going out to bid tomorrow, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
It could compare to the prices, by many, the prices may come back way higher than I, you never know.
No, I understand that, I just wanted to be sure that we're all um working off the same knowledge, that, that that's um your level, that's yes. And I, I very much appreciate that, but I wanted to ensure that we're all understanding and cognizant of the fact that that's a prediction at this point, and that may be uh more, I mean, I don't think we all hope it's less, that there is a potentiality for it to be higher, yeah?
Pretty much, pretty much true, yes.
Okay. Um, that's uh, that is the only thing I wanted to contribute to this, and sorry for the problems at the go-to meeting, uh, but um, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, in this, our five percent that we sent back from boards and commissions, that money that is not being utilized with the lack of stuff they're doing.
Exactly.
How much money is that standing at, and is there any money there?
You know, uh, before, before you answer something, I got that paperwork here in front of me. Uh, one thing that is interesting, you had the Colorado Preservation Inc. Saving Places Conference. Uh, I don't think that was expended, because that was for this year, that was six thousand dollars. And then you have a, I'm not sure what this preservation consultant service, that might be something that we have to do. Uh, of course, the Certified Local Government Regional Forum in June was five hundred dollars, that's a small amount. Um, there was an incentive program, uh landmark sites. Mike, what is that? Cause that was ten grand.
So, that incentive program is for, I don't know if you recall, George, you presented uh little plaques for incentives for landmark sites, each one of those plaques is five hundred dollars. Uh, and it's placed on those uh sites that are uh on our historic preservation uh, uh list. Um, so those are five hundred dollars a piece for the plaque, and uh she projected twenty of them to have. So, um, we can definitely, like I said, all these numbers are not set in stone, um, so we can adjust.
Okay, uh, then you also digitized the historic building survey at ten thousand?
So what that is here is uh, we currently have a paper map that is uh colored in.
I'll be there.
So it's paper, it's fragile. If we digitize it, we'll have a computer uh map that's uh available to edit without uh starting anew with paper, so that's what that is.
Okay. Uh, then you have a preservation festival keynote speaker at three thousand dollars. Uh, that probably didn't happen either, did it?
Uh, it's scheduled for September fifth, so I'm gonna say uh probably won't happen.
Okay. Then you have uh developed resource list to skilled restoration contractors? And uh how we sent to-
Right, that, that, that is minimal, and I think that could be done virtually.
Okay. So, let, let, let's go back again and recap a little bit, that Colorado, the Saving Places Conference, six thousand dollars. Uh, did that happen? Is that expended out already?
No.
Okay, so between that and that preservation consultant service, is that necessary?
Um, that one, it, um, well, again, I'll have to talk to George in the commission, but I believe that is
Okay.
uh, a component that is available, should we um have anybody come forward. So it's kind of a, a retainer, but I don't believe it's expanded yet.
Okay, so let's take a look at this, so if, if, if we don't utilize that saving places at six thousand. And then uh, you have a survey plan for public meetings, refreshments, a thousand dollars, that's minimal. That incentive program for the landmark sites, if we cut that in half and do half now and half at a later time, you know, that's uh, that's eleven thousand dollars. And then you have that uh preservation uh festival, that's three thousand, that's, that's fourteen thousand dollars that we could save just in, in that area there if necessary. Um, I was looking at the, from Penny Shaevi from the Main Street Board, it looks like um Christmas celebration, prize money for business decorating, um, that could be looked at, I guess. Uh, the arts and culture is something, of course, Ferrari, uh, you know, we, we're into some of that money, I think, that went to the running horse and the sculpture, the other sculpture. Uh, then you have sculpture of two dogs chasing Frisbee for replacement at the dog park, has that been ordered already?
No, as far as I know, it has not, Mayor, um, and um, that is a possibility that that could be-
Cut back, that's eleven, that's eleven thousand dollars, so now we're looking at about, you know, close to twenty-five thousand dollars savings between what I've talked about so far. Um, then we were looking at the requested city projects that uh general will match uh for a hundred thousand dollars, that could be something, like I said, if you wanted to cut back on, you know, do fifty now and fifty later, if that's what we wanna do. Uh, I, I just think that uh we can work around that, um, a little bit, I think this, you know, could be reduced some for, to help. You also have the outside agency requests, I know that the Trinidad Youth Club. I have one thing that I, I wanna make sure is that they are still a viable organization before we give them any more money. Uh, and that would be something for you and your staff to investigate, to make sure that they are uh still a valid organization, that they're not struggling with all of this stuff that's going on. So I, I, you know, my personal feeling is I, like, it sounds like what council is saying is that maybe we could do both projects. Of course, what's gonna happen is we need to get the bids for both projects. Uh, one's going out to bid tomorrow, which we'll probably be able to, uh, Mr. Beach, how many days will it be before we get those bids back that you're requesting?
Uh, as I said earlier, it's advertised on the fourth, eleventh, and the eighteenth. And the bids are due on the twenty-fifth, and that will bring it to council on the first.
Okay, on the first of September, okay. Uh, and Wally, uh, any ideas of when we're gonna be able to get this out to bid? Is Wally still on?
Yeah, he's got.
Uh, we, we had a discussion with the architect, and we're looking uh to streamline the process, get these out to bid. Uh, we're working through the bid documents with the architect as we speak. Uh, we should have this thing out to bid. Um, last week, July, first week of August, a couple of uh weeks for bid. Um, I, I think we can bring it to council, um, almost, almost simultaneous with the uh, uh, Noah's Ark in September, but we may be a couple of weeks behind, so uh the end of September, council will be able to have it in front of them.
Okay. Okay, here's where I'm going with this, you know, I think that, you know, just from here, what council is, is, is saying is that we allocate the entire amount of one million one hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred one dollars uh for everything that's on the table here today, and maybe uh an additional uh possible fifty thousand dollars to cap um in excess of that, and we could put that as a tentative at this point in time. Uh, due to the two projects that we are expecting bids on, and probably go with the listed requested projects. Uh, and the only other difference would be that hundred thousand dollars for the Fox Theater. Uh, and Cheryl said that some of that money would come from CIP anyway. So I, I, I think we can cut that in half if necessary. So I, I think we, we could almost break even on this, pretty darn close.
Mayor, may I ask why you want the money for the CIP or the grant match to come out of marijuana? I'm just curious.
Nothing, that was, that was just a, a general thought that I had, but if it, if it can come out of, uh, you said we're pretty flush with uh the CIP. If that money could come out of there, I think it'd be okay.
Yes, we can, uh, we should have funding available this year if anything were to come to light in a grant match. However, when we build up next year's budget, we can specifically set up a certain amount for grant match, be it a hundred thousand or whatever excess we have other, over other projects that we submit.
Okay. So, so Mike, would we, uh, if we, to be able to allocate that hundred thousand dollars from the CIP fund, that would have to come uh separately from, you know, in front of council, correct? Either as an ordinance or?
Working there, if, if a grant comes available, um, yes, then, then I would bring it forward and uh, through working with staff and Cheryl mostly, that would see where projects are, what's available in the CIP, and we bring it forward in that request. Um, next year, uh, as we work through the twenty twenty-one budget, which Cheryl is saying is, we, we will actually build that into- we, we will actually build that into our, uh, projections in the CIP as grant match, um, not identifying for a specific project if it is available.
Okay, so if we just took that?
With all due respect, I think we're crossing the line here from a work session to city council meeting, and it just kinda feels that way.
No, not really, I, I think we're just getting suggestions as to have the possi- the, the possibilities.
Okay, there's just.
No decisions being made.
No decisions are made. But anyway, you know, I, Mike, what I, I think, so, what I'd like to see, and probably council would like to see is now you take it back to directors and see what you come up with complete, and, uh, bring it forward.
Uh, I appreciate the discussion, this is exactly there, um, what I'd like.
Yes. Someone have a question?
You know, I think that, I, I do have a, a quick comment, I think that if, can you hear me okay? Cause my internet connection's going nuts.
No, we're fine.
Okay, so I think, uh, we should look at putting some numbers together, Mike, that possibly would fund both of the Noah's Ark and space to create,
Mm-hmm.
and a priority list, and what a dollar amount would be out of the rainy day fund to supplement the three hundred forty-eight, eight forty, for us to go ahead and fund and put everything on hold till the next quarterly allocation. I mean, is that kinda what you're saying there?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, and like I said, it looks like by taking that hundred thousand off the table right away, that really changes, uh, that really changes everything. And of course, those others that I was talking about, which is about a hundred thousand, I'm about twenty-five thousand. So, we're looking at about, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that would come off the top of this, so I think that we may be in pretty good shape, so I think that, uh, the directors could take a good solid look at this and bring us back, uh, some good recommendations as to what we can do.
The mayor?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Obeltry?
They didn't talk about, they didn't talk about the planning zoning and various commission budgets, but they have a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar budget item for a market permit happened in September, and seven, and we still have none in our, uh, area that normally don't happen.
Yeah, you're right, I missed that, so now we're looking at close to forty thousand dollars. Um, so yeah, there's a, there, there's, there's some, we, we do have, we do have some leeway here, so, uh, Mike, uh, take it to your directors and see what you guys can do with all these recommendations, I know there's quite a bit. Uh, but I, I think we have a work, I think we have a workable solution.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that, Mike, that you think you would need from us?
Uh, no, mayor, I, that, that's exactly the discussion, uh, I wanted to have to, to get council's, uh, concerns and priorities, so we will put something together and, uh, bring it forward.
Okay, let's move on to Island Three, twenty-twenty-one budget discussion. Uh, you know, A, capital improvement projects, uh, and of course, priorities that maybe council has identified for, that we could, that we can think of. Uh, Mike, do you have any particular capital improvement projects for twenty-twenty-one that you are seeing at this point in time?
Mayor, I, I do not, uh, we're, I'm flattered by all the directors and, and, uh, uh, they're all, we're, huh, swamped with projects, uh, trying to just keep up, but, uh, one project that I have always, uh, wanted to get completed is the Main Street project from, um, the intersection of, uh, Santa Fe Trail with Animus down, uh, from Santa Fe Trail to Animus complete so that we have an entrance. Um, but we, we don't have a budget for that, that's, that's, needs to be put together. But, um, in your, in our budget, we have, uh, you know, the four-year projection, we have, uh, projected out for, uh, ADA access and Monument Lake, we put capital championship ones there every year, parks and playgrounds, and store sewer rebuild, uh, street resurfacing, um, Riverwalk improvements, and then we also have a contingency, so, uh, I don't know if council had any projects that they would like staff to consider to put together an estimate on, and that's kind of, uh, that's where we're at.
Hey, Mike, uh, you know, Cheryl mentioned that, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, money available in the CIP from this year. Uh, if we don't utilize that and roll it over into next year, of course, like I said, we've gotta be careful with what our budget will look like for next year at this point in time. Uh, but is that a possibility to roll it over? The twenty-twenty, uh, money that is a balance that we can project?
Yes, yeah, we, we do that, we, we have projects that are ongoing, um, that, uh, kind of spent several years, so we roll it over, we, Cheryl looks at, uh, where projects are, how much more, um, at the end of the year, she wants to know definitely from staff, uh, what was spent in, for this one twenty-twenty, and what will be carried over twenty-twenty-one, so, um, I don't know, Cheryl, you have anything to add to that, but, uh, we do roll some projects over.
That is correct, um, when we, when we budget, we try to budget at least, it, well, at least what we receive throughout the year plus all the grant funds, and there's always a little bit left unspent for the unknown, uh, this past year was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, however, when we do get ready to roll over, well, for example, our expenses budgeted for twenty-twenty total nine point one million dollars budgeted, but the likelihood of us spending all of that is probably, we might get to five million, and then the remainder of that is always rolled forward.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, you know, one thing that I'd, you know, you'd like to see is, uh, this council, starting with Mr. Goodall, have you thought of any priorities that you could, uh, identify that you would like to maybe see happen if possible?
I do, and I think it's time for us to quit coming up with excuses to the people in town. When I went and got this, uh, not myself, but the group I, I was part of, and got the capital improvement money approved again, everybody said the same thing to me, um, streets, we have to put together an aggressive resurfacing, paving plan to get out to the public, to make them feel better about approving this and being told, well, we're waiting on utilities, we're waiting, we're waiting. It's time for us to put all excuses aside, put together a resurfacing and a paving plan for next year and get out there and redo some of these streets so we can show the people. They wanna see it, they've been asking for it, it's time.
Uh, do you have any streets in particular that you can identify that would be a priority?
We have a lot of streets, especially where the sewer project happened, going south of Main Street, the streets up there. Uh, people have complained about when you go down, one of the streets that runs along, uh, Kit Carson Park, San Pedro.
Right.
That street down there where those bricks are that are up heat, I travel that road, um, quite occasionally, and it is terrible, but, um, we need to get some of these streets redone.
You know, you mentioned San Pedro, and of course, that was gonna be one of my priorities, and I'm glad you mentioned it, but one of the issues that we have there, and I'm not sure council, all council is aware, uh, and Mike, you might correct me, but from my understanding is that, uh, way back when, uh, we made a commitment to keep the brick streets, uh, and some people are just wondering, is there any way that, mm, cause not all of that street is bad, a lot of it is, can any of that just be paved instead of going back with any of the brick?
Um, back in, in the late seventies, there was a historic, uh, plan put forth to the state there. I don't wanna say the streets on Red Street, but there is an ordinance in place that says we will keep these brick streets, and it identifies, uh, which segments of brick and everything. Over the years, we have rebuilt, we have, uh, actually, uh, because of the old papers, installed new papers, so that is an option, I will say that, uh, San Pedro is, um, at least a mile or more of brick street, um, which, um, kind of part of the issue is the infrastructure underneath that would have to be replaced, so, but I, I, uh, I see where Councilman Goodall is coming from, and we just pick and prioritize, put those numbers down and start, so, um,
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm saying, I, I won't pick the worst streets in town and tell you we need to go there, but we need to pick some streets that need done, that we don't have an excuse, uh, infrastructure underneath or anything else that we could go in and just get done. So, I won't prioritize by what's worse than it biggest need, but what we can get in and do. And I really like your idea, Mike, about finishing Main Street from Animus to Santa Fe Trail, uh, for our entryway, that should be a priority also.
We're getting the, we're getting the pretty big rainstorm, guys, so, we're getting wet out there. Uh, Ms. Obeltry?
There are so many things that I would like, um, the city to do, and so it's, it's kind of a hard thing to narrow it down. But I agree, streets should be a priority, sewer, 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 we need to move our sewer projects along, because if we don't have a sewer, we don't have a city. And so, we can, we have to focus on the things that even if they're not as exciting as, um, is what I'd like to do, which is improve the Riverwalk and sidewalks in town to make it a more, a walkable city. I'm very concerned about the state of our, our sewer lines, and, and like us to put some focus there.
Mike, uh, I know, of course, we're working on that main sewer line now, um, which other sewer lines that you can think of, uh, are critical at this time?
Um,
All of it?
We've all, yeah, we're still, uh, we're still, uh, have a little bit left to do with our, uh, for Trinidad, that we have a grant out there, we've been working with the, uh, uh, slip lining contractor, so that should take care of sewer mains from Main Street to Fourth Street and from High to basically Oak, we, we got some of those done, but we're moving forward with those, uh, the slip lining apps, uh, you know, thirty years to the life of the old clay tile, so that's the direction we, we've been moving in to, uh, so we don't have to do, uh, direct berry, uh, dig up all the streets, but, um, where, where we have to and, and repair open sewer veins, we get after it. Um, to prioritize, uh, that's, that's in, uh, one of the, where's it? We put together way back to, to start with the old town and work our way out, um, that's the way the town was built and the way it progressed back in the old days, so that means it's older in the center of town and, and newer as it gets out in the mountains, so, um, we're, uh, we go after the clay tile lines most.
Okay, so Ms. Obeltry, uh, get back to your, you, if, you know, your wish list. Of course, sewer lines, and what else did you say?
Um, I would love to have us, as we're doing our ADA compliance work, to consider, um, doing some kind of an incentive program around the town to repair sidewalks. I walk around a lot, and it, it's shocking to me how, how bad, uh, quite a few of the sidewalks are that are not in the right downtown area. Um, there have been places that have no sidewalks at all, and houses that have no sidewalks, and houses that have, um, hard of sidewalks, and, and I, I think bringing the city together, um, and as it grows and as it progresses, it needs to be walkable, and I think it, it is not particularly walkable, um, there are too many tripping hazards throughout the city that it makes it dangerous and uncomfortable to do that. I'd love to see that you come up with some kind of a program where they could, um, because as I understand it, the homeowners are responsible for their own sidewalks, but quite a few of them can't do a darn thing about it because of the cost, but maybe if there was some helping incentive that we could do and plan out blocks at a time, it could get done. Uh, the Riverwalk itself, I think it's, uh, is a benefit that Trinidad has that it does not focus upon enough, and I think if we, uh, continue to improve it and make it a place that people want to be at, well, it will take care of other problems that we have with, um, people doing things down there that they shouldn't be doing. Um, we need to get more people down there enjoying that space, more of the public enjoying that space.
So, what, what do you see needs to be done with the Riverwalk?
Well, I still think we need to work on clearing brushouts so that you can see down in there and just see the walkways that are there, um, and then just generally improve it, clean it up, um, you know, if you go to Potlone and you see the Riverwalk that they have, I'd love to have something as, as nice, uh, as that, and is a draw-on place for, when people stop here and they think, hey, let's go take a walk and sit down by the river and have lunch.
Okay, Ms. Gregor?
Um, I think we should increase, uh, councilman's wages to a hundred million dollars a piece. I'm not saying capital improvement, but, but we should, so, no, it's just, we're just, we're just needing some commentary.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, but anyway, I think Rusty's idea with the streets are carrying forth, and also the, the Mike's idea of finishing Main Street, it seems like Main Street is disconnected from Animus going west, and I think we need to get that taken care of. The, for sure, um, I got a call from, uh, somebody here in town that mentioned the Riverwalk, and, and she said, why don't we put rib ramp and clean out all the underbrush and make it clear on the Riverwalk where, I don't know if that's possible with all the water rights issues and things like that, but, they did it in Salida, and I know Salida's river is a lot more forest open arms, but it, it's a focal point to downtown Salida, and I think Trinidad's could be too, if it's something that's not super, super expensive. But my, my heart is in downtown Trinidad, I think that is our advertisement. Cannot believe the number of people that walk to downtown Trinidad, and I think it's amazing, and I think we need to maintain the downtown area and make it as prosperous as possible. That's it?
Okay.
That should be, that should take over about six miles right there.
Sure.
Okay.
Hold for the lottery, uh, Mr. DeBono, Mr. DeBono?
Yeah, pretty much what Rusty said, uh, there's also a street that's perpendicular that runs to San Pedro, leading towards the Los Angeles County Fairgrounds, it's, uh, can't remember exactly the street, it's the one after Gauding, but, uh, that needs to be addressed. And what, uh, Councilwoman Obeltry stated about the Riverwalk, uh, I, I walked towards the Riverwalk, almost up to Kit Carson Trail, and I've noticed that somebody's tagging the benches, and actually, a couple of the benches have been removed. I walked there just a few days ago, so, um, that's kind of an issue.
Okay. Mr. Schuh?
Well, everybody's kind of touched on, on streets and everything, I'd like to see Colorado Avenue get fixed, we, we've kind of done that, just kind of dress up that area, uh, as far as the Riverwalk, I, I showed Mike some plans that we had had when we put the flags in and kind of like maybe finish that project, and that's kind of cleaning up the riverbed. And, uh, everybody else is, uh, like I say, we've talked about, uh, the entrance way for the city of Trinidad, we should make it as welcome as possible and make it look real nice so that when people come here, that's where they wanna stay. Uh, and, and increase our parking lot, I'd like to see us get that parking lot over here on, uh, West Main, uh, by the station there, see if we can get that done, and make a few things there accessible for people, uh, Uh, that's, that's it with me, I had talked to Mike about some others though, but he can bring that up.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
No, I, I would not disagree with anything that's been said, I think, um, if I have to pick one, I would, uh, agree with Councilman Obeltry, uh, we say we really need to focus on infrastructure of the city, I mean, with, you know, it's not a, it's a mighty mighty stretch, but unless, uh, we have a good solid infrastructure, we can't do any of the other things. I know all of their, them are important, I think, um, downtown and the riverwalk, all, uh, bear, you know, consideration absolutely, but I think first and foremost in my mind would be, um, the infrastructure. In a lot of places, the streets can't come until the infrastructure happens, so, you know, there's a balancing act to do there. Infrastructure and streets would be, um, primary priority.
Okay, okay, uh, there with me. Uh, you know, you, Mr. Goodall touched on San Pedro, which is something I was going to mention, the other item I had was, um, the entrance coming into Trinidad, and we've talked about this before, coming off of fourteen B. Uh, if there's, uh, something that we could do to dress that up as people come into that fourteen B uh, off of into Colorado Avenue, the, just that, that exit right there. Uh, I'm not sure how much of that is C dot and how much of his R's, uh, that we could do something to fix it up, dress it up, I really don't know. Uh, I know they originally talked about a, uh, roundabout there, but I, I'm not sure if that's still even in, you know, a thought or not. Uh, the other thing, Mike, and I don't know, something, you know, we talked a lot about the sewer lines, the water lines. What about our electrical grid downtown?
Uh, it's, it's aging as everything is, um, so, you know, definitely, uh, need to upgrade, we're still, you know, we've got four circuits that are forty one sixty, four thousand one hundred sixty volts every, all the newer stuff is thirteen thousand eight hundred volts, so we have two voltages out there, a lot of old transformers, um, yeah, it's just, we try to chip away if we can, but it's, um, yeah.
Okay, and just?
All around.
Okay, uh, just kind of go back and just recap, uh, you know, the streets with sewer lines, uh, San Pedro, and then the other street up above, um, you know, repair some of the sidewalks that may be damaged. Uh, maybe offer an incentive to the owners or to, to the business owners if they're willing to do something. Uh, the riverwalk is something that we've talked about, I think that could still be done. Uh, we talked about purchasing a piece of equipment, which was very minimal, and just doing some additional work. Um, also, there was some benches that Mr. DeBono talked about. Mr. Shu talked about the Colorado Avenue, looking at that, and the parking lot on West Main Street, see if we can do something with it. I know there's some additional, uh, things there that are going on, there's someone that wants to purchase some of that property, I'm not sure where that's at. Um, Mr. Williamson was talking about, of course, infrastructure overall, and I mentioned about, uh, the upgrading, take a look at the, our power grid downtown, as well as maybe the entrance coming into Trinidad off of four, exit fourteen B. So those are what council looks like, they would like maybe see, and of course, we can't do it all, but I think it would be a starting point for uh, you and the directors to take a look at when you start doing your budget for next year to see what you feel uh, we could get done and which, there again, look at priorities, which is, which are critical, which are not critical. Um, anything else that you think that you're looking for, Mike, or do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, Mayor, nothing to add, I appreciate the priorities, um, there is one issue that comes to mind and, and that is staff capacity, um, that's where, that's where we get hung up and, and so, you know, I know there is also a wish for a, uh, you know, outdoor trail slash recreation, uh, person, we're looking at, at trying to fill that in the middle of all this too, and, uh, city planner, um, the, uh, engineering staff is who all these projects come, they come onto, is at capacity with ADA and everything, so, um, no excuses, we'll, we'll move forward, we'll, we'll have a plan, but, uh, it's a, it's a big list and we'll, we'll put it into what budget we have available and, and for council's approval.
Well, and like you mentioned about the necessity to have a planner slash recreational director, which would, you know, halftime one, halftime the other, I think you and I've discussed that a little bit, had some discussion on it, uh, that's?
We're, we're building job descriptions.
Okay. Okay, well, uh, see what you guys can come up with, uh, and bring it forward and see what we, what we can maybe do. Uh, let's go ahead and if you don't mind, let's take about a, you know, five minute break, we've been at this couple hours. We have the next item, which is marijuana hospitality establishment, which is probably going to take some discussion. So if everybody wants to turn off their turn mine off to quit, turn off your bike, uh, and about five minutes, come back and we'll finish it up.